Motion to approve our prior minutes of March 28th, our regular town board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. One abstained. Three, four. I would like to, I have one announcement, that our leaf and brush drop off is now open Saturday, the last Saturday of the month, from nine to eleven through the first hard frost sometime in November. So drop your leaves and brush off. Does anybody else have any other announcements? We have two public hearings. I'm going to open our public hearing for our local law to be numbered of 2016 entitled "The Local Law Repealing Chapter 125-61 of the Rhinebeck Town Code." This is for our green building standards, and we've been discussing it. If anybody wishes to speak on this, please do. I am also going to, should I keep it open until we vote? I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, seeing that nobody wishes to speak on it. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're closing the public hearing on our, for the local law repealing Chapter 125-61 of the Town of Rhinebeck Code, green building standard. We also have another local law that we'll be voting on tonight. Local law to be numbered of 2016 entitled "The Local Law Changing the Meeting Date of the Rhinebeck Town Board of Assessors." That's open. We've been asked by our Board of Assessors to change our grievance day from the fourth Tuesday in May to the Wednesday after the fourth Tuesday in May. We have, one of our assessors is employed full town, full time by the Town of Lloyd as an assessor. She can't be present. The assessors wanted everybody to be able to be present at our grievance day. So this allows us to do so in something that we're allowed to do under our home rule. So if anybody wishes to speak on that, please do. Any, anybody from the board? I'd like to make a motion to close our public hearing. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Any committee or liaison reports?
Rhinebeck Waterfront Committee, which is part of the Rec. Committee, I'm the chairman of the committee, so I'll speak in just a bit. We have our tentative date set for this year's waterfront day, which is June 11th on Saturday. So we are now reaching out to some of the local press people to see if they'd like a table again this year. We've already got a couple of good responses. So if there's anybody out there who wants to have a table at the Rhinebeck waterfront day, they can certainly contact me or Alice Cunningham, who's the rep director. So that's really about it.
Great.
The very little cunning stages, so there's still our everybody we don't have, but there's Bonnie from China Rose, who's working with James Chapman at the Rhinebeck Hotel on the food and the music part of it.
Maybe we can get something out on our website.
Yeah.
They want to write something, and we can massage it and put it out, call for volunteers or vendors or, great. That'll be nice to have that back. Thanks.
Yeah.
Elaine, did you want to talk about this?
Ah, okay, is now the time you want to talk about it?
Why not?
Well, you know, you're right, and why not? You're right. Well, you know, since I've been on the board, there's been this question about Panda that's been raised several times, to our board and to other boards, as far as is Panda services, are they still essential to the communities they serve? We have an inter-municipal agreement with five municipalities, Town of Red Hook, Village of Red Hook, Town of Rhinebeck, Village of Rhinebeck, and the Village of Tivoli. We recently learned that Red Hook is no longer going to be funding Panda.
The village?
The Village of Red Hook, not the Town. Yes, thank you. So of course, it brings up the issue of where the other towns and villages will stand now, because it changes a lot when one municipality pulls out. So I've had, I have very mixed feelings personally as liaison to this committee. I'm in full support of public access. I love the idea and what they do. But, you know, last year, we talked to them about the fact that there are some things that they need to do to get into the 21st century. And they came up with a great draft plan, and then it never really went anywhere. It sort of fell by the wayside. We never heard anything more about it. I personally was very excited by the plan they had, the draft. I felt like they had a lot of great ideas of the kind of programming they could do that would really make them much more involved with the communities than it felt like they've really been. You know, there, there is the argument that YouTube, we could certainly broadcast on YouTube for free, are those services essential? I've argued for the fact that I think, and I do believe this, that there are a lot of seniors and other people who don't use the computer, either by choice or they don't know how to. So Panda becomes more important. But then the cable company changed the Panda station, and a lot of people lost it anyway. So that throws that confusion into the mix. So I think it is a good time to talk about Panda's importance and relevance now. And what we want to do as a municipality, I mean, it seems silly, in my opinion, to go, and I understand where the Village of Red Hook is coming from, I mean, it seems to me they're in full support of public access too.
That's the letter we got from the mayor informing us.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I've been reading.
The letter from the mayor informing us that they were not, would you like me to read it out loud?
Yeah, why not? It's a nice letter.
Yeah, it really was. So they wrote it to Panda, and of course, we were copied. And it says, "Dear Panda Board Members, our village is currently looking at a new budget year, 2016-17, the incredibly low tax cap for villages, 0.12%, and the amazingly varied options and state of video technology options. On top of this, we have reviewed the current Panda five-year contract and see that it expires in April 2016. As you know, we pay $11,000, $8,75 annually for Panda services and have been doing that for many years. Now we see other options for us to record and provide digital access to our meetings while greatly reducing our costs. The net result is that the village board has authorized a move away from Panda, and this letter is to advise you that we will not be renewing our contract, the five-party agreement, as it expires this month. We did not make this decision lightly and know that it will impact the existence of Panda, but we also recognize that the video and digital technology has moved on and arbitrary tax caps force us to do more with less money. I have always marveled at the dedication of the station manager and the board of Panda, and we wish you well, but we have to move in our own direction." Now, the only thing I will say is I wish we had a little bit more notice from the village. I mean, April of 16, obviously, is this month.
I think we do, Elaine. I looked at the, we, we can, I think we should ask them to come and talk to us at our next meeting.
May I?
Yeah, because this expires at the beginning of May, but it says that we can, any, you can leave at any time with X amount of notice, 90 days of notice before October 1st. So we're funded through this year, and I think it's, you know, we're, we're committed through this year. We can withdraw with 90 days of notice as long as we give the notice before October. And if another municipality leaves, we can give 30 days' notice and leave. So it doesn't seem that we have, we have time, and I think we should discuss it.
Yeah, I think so too. No, that is really good to know. It's still would have been nice to have a full, like, five municipal discussion with all parties present before somebody made a decision. It just would have been helpful, because we're all on this contract together. But I, but I do think that, I know some concerns that I've had with Panda. One is that they're supposed to be there for the community, and they're supposed to be able to train people and loan out their equipment, and they're perfectly happy to do that. But the problem is, they're very limited in their hours and availability to the community. So they're not, they're not available after working hours, and they're not available on weekends. And so how accessible are you to a community with a big working class if you're not available during non-working hours? And I think that's an important question to ask. And I know I've raised that issue to them before. So there, there are legitimate concerns. Again, I understand where the Village of Red Hook is coming from.
Let's ask them to come to our next meeting, see if the president and maybe our representative can come. And, you know, it will all shake out, but it's something that we need to discuss with the four remaining municipalities and the Panda board.
Yes.
We fund Panda almost $15,000 a year, $14,799, let's call it, $14,799, it's $14,800. So, all right, thank you.
Let me just say that if these, when I go out campaigning, I am surprised by the number of people who say they watch Panda.
Right.
And I think, I guess you said it, that the number of older people, and I guess I fit in that category, are not tuned to YouTube or whatever. So I think Panda does perform a very useful service of getting the word out. And, you know, we can decide what to do, maybe, like, you know, if those other people, other municipalities pull out, maybe Panda will have to survive unless, because we're around the same budget, I mean, maybe they can survive on less.
Maybe they can do some fundraising. Maybe the model can change, you know?
Exactly. That's the thing that I think they're going to need to look at, is changing their model. Because I agree with you, people, there are people that do watch Panda and can get it through the public access station that would otherwise see it, and that's important. They should be able to see town government proceedings. But again, they're, what they're supposed to be doing for the community is bigger than that, and that's what, and part of that is it's not happening. So I do think we need a discussion of that for sure.
Good. All right, so that will be coming up. Any other liaison reports or anybody?
The Open Space and Affordable Housing Committee is meeting this month with a number of possible consultants, and we'll be back probably in the beginning of May with a recommendation about retaining a consultant to do a study of the need for an availability of workforce or affordable housing in the community, and we think that's the next step in the process. So we'll be back with a formal proposal, a recommendation for just the selection of consultants.
Thanks. Any other updates? Assessors, I said at our last meeting, would be coming to speak to us with the state about our evaluation and a possible need for a townwide reassessment. Not until after grievance day, because this is their busiest time of the year, so it'll be sometime in June. Okay, moving on. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-088, engagement of attorney to represent the town in the hearings before the zoning board of appeals on the appeal of Red Wing Properties, Inc., from the decision of the zoning administrator denying non-conformant use application. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-093, preliminary accounts payable, abstract vouchers 448 through 506, 44 checks totaling $69,602.38. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-094, capital projects, abstracts, two checks totaling $2,079.91. May I have a second?
Second.
This is our painted cart from the last, for the natural burial, and, any further discussion?
Was that what you said in the last meeting when you worked on? Oh, okay, that was, that was.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-095 for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-096, I'd like a motion for the appointment to the Recreation Committee. May I have one? Motion?
Motion.
I'll second it. We are appointing Leslie Hill to the Recreation Committee for a term to, through this year?
It says a three-year term ending December, oh yeah, 2018.
Thank you. Three-year term ending December 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Leslie, for volunteering. Resolution 2016-097, request for proposal for the execution of a portion of the Frost family trails at the Thompson-Mazzarella Community Park. I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I had a number of questions, and I'm just reading the RFP, and it talks about clearing, the trail I gather is going to be six feet wide.
Right.
And, but you're clearing 18 feet. Why you're clearing, why do you have to clear 18 feet if the trail is only going to be six feet?
There is a stone wall that runs around the perimeter of the property, and the trail is very close to that boundary. And there's a lot of debris and trees that have fallen, and it's an area, while people are using that part of the trail, it would be wonderful to have the stone wall exposed and to clean up, to make it safer for trees that are down or falling or dead, to just clean up that area so it's a more pleasant experience.
So you just clean on one side of the trail?
Right.
Not on both sides?
Just on one side. The other side has the open fields that we have just leveled and seeded.
Yeah, it just, in the RFP, it's not clear that you're clearing just one side and not both sides, so at least I thought.
Just the one side.
Oh, okay.
I will be meeting with.
Maybe that could be just clearer in the RFP before it goes out, that it's clearing one side, the side with the stone wall.
Okay.
And I guess the other thing is work to be completed in the spring of 2016.
We're hoping that it will be completed before the, the season of the red park, of the public, for all their summer activity.
I guess I would suggest you put in a specific date rather than the spring, you know, if you want, day 31 or something, so, because I don't think, I think it's so indefinite you're going to have a problem.
What if we say by July 1st, or June, June 30?
Whatever day you want.
Yeah, June 16.
Yeah, all right.
And then I guess the last thing I had, it's all soil until produced on the excavation, the trails will be transferred to a contiguous area of the great lawn. Again, not so specific, you know, they can dump it wherever they want on the great lawn, or can it be more specific? Are you going to mark an area on the great lawn?
We'll probably have some flags set out so they know where to, I think it's something where we'll talk to the soccer people to determine where the best area will be, who says the ones that are going to be working in that area.
But you're, I would think you'd want to have that designated by April 18th, when there's the site visit.
Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, okay, so that will be designated by, or put off your site visit till it can be designated. Those are all the comments.
Any further comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Sally.
I don't know if it's appropriate at this time to talk about the reevaluation of the drainage for the soccer field and baseball fields.
Let's, can we get through our resol, can you wait till, did you want to leave?
I guess I'll wait and see.
No, come on up then, if you want to.
At the next town board meeting, the town board agreed that the town supervisor, two members of the park committee, and two members of the group that are volunteering to work on the soccer fields get together and discuss some of the issues related to the work that they had planned, which, you know, would be a promise to develop the soccer fields, and the need to look seriously at the drainage that was initially planned for that area. Aaron Peck, who has been the engineer over the past several years, working on the park project, met with us, and there was a discussion that dealt with the seriousness and how important the drainage issue was in relationship to that area, and whether or not it would have an impact on the new roadway and parking area that would be necessary once the fields were developed. And the results of that meeting was to ask Aaron to come back with a proposal that would take a look at the engineering that was initially designed for a turf field versus a grass field, and what the implication would be. I talked to Aaron today, and he said it would not cost more than $4,000 to evaluate that, take three people and himself, and working on the report, I'm sorry, take two people, three days to do the work, and then come back to determine what the drainage would be. There was a lot of discussion back and forth, a lot of technical issues, whether or not drainage could be done after the fields were in place, did we have to live by what initially was designed when the type of field is going to be completely different, that the impact would certainly change based on what's being proposed. So.
Thank you.
Aaron will come back with a written proposal. I don't know if the board could make a decision that up to $4,000 could be spent on that study, so that way they can do the work and we could move this project along.
All right, thanks.
Sally, I have a question. Have you determined any fields are going to be needed for baseball yet? Because there was a question at the last meeting about whether they were needed or not, so many suggestions.
I, I think what they had planned is that entire area will be leveled appropriately and seeded. And in the future, if there's a decision to make any changes, you know, at least we have something there that's usable, and the work would be the same in terms of what the need is.
The issue here is we were, this, we speced out to do artificial turf fields. We are now moving to natural grass, so because of that, we need to do another engineering study, an addendum to our original year of engineering study. Do you want to wait until we get a written notice from Weston and Sampson, or do you want to approve up to $4,000 to do this study, which we have to do in order to move ahead? It's, as you wish.
Whether our collection was, and maybe something happened while I was waiting, so I sent up the last meeting, there's, was a group that was going to get together because Mr. DeCoulas represented, I think, soccer.
This was the meeting.
Okay, indicated he had an engineer who said.
He brought his engineer, right.
And we thought Weston and Sampson was contrary, and they were all going to get together to see if they could iron out the differences. But I gather what you're saying is Weston and Sampson is now saying that they want $4,000 to decide whether or not the engineering report that Mr. DeCoulas presented to us is something that they would buy down to or not.
No, it's more to determine whether or not the engineering that they did earlier is appropriate at this time, or if the engineering or the drainage should be designed differently based on the type of field that would be developed.
Hey, Joe, they did a study for an artificial turf field, or engineer for an artificial turf field.
Okay, so that's what the difference is.
And what Weston and Sampson said, before we can even just talk to the soccer league and the lacrosse people about doing the fields before we do the parking lots, we have to determine what the inflow rate will be on a sod field. And that, so this study that they would be doing would tell us if the engineering they design will stand, and whether or not we can proceed and let the soccer league go ahead without doing the roads first.
And we also include whether or not the speeding permit that DUC approved is appropriate, is it going to satisfy the stormwater issues that DUC would be having?
So do you, I'll go back to, do you want to approve up to $4,000 for additional engineering, or do you want to wait?
How about to wait? My own view is we ought to wait till we have an actual proposal.
The only thing it does is it pushes back the time of, I guess, we're trying to get it done before fall, so they could get the sod in. It's going to take two years for the sod to tape before anyone can play on it. But that, that's fine, Elaine.
I assume they give us proposal until leaves?
Hold on, Elaine, wait, wait for a proposal, or?
I don't know, I'm torn. I understand where you're coming from, wanting to get a proposal first, but I also understand that there's, that we have only around a sign, but what comes?
We have another two weeks until our next meeting. We could wait, we could call a special meeting if we get one sooner. It's two weeks.
And when, when you, would you start calling, or does this have to be answered then? Why doesn't it become credible?
Well, I think, you know, everything, we've been postponing things, waiting for this group to get together and really make a decision what the next steps are. This is probably one step of the number of steps that will have to take place.
I'm fine with waiting for a proposal. I mean, if we rush it, something could happen. You know, we're changing from, let's look at it, make sure, you know, I'd love to say let's do it, but it is $4,000. Is that all right, Sally?
Okay.
Wait, is everybody, Joe wants to wait, I'm on the fence, you seem on the fence.
Okay, my experience is.
Let's err on the side of caution. Right? Okay. Thank you. Sure. Resolution 2016-098, I'll make a motion for appointments to the board to assess and review. We started our, our session, an executive session, and we met with Teresa Velardi and Lisa Rosenfeld. Like to motion that we appoint Teresa Velardi to a term to expire on September 30th of 2016, and Lisa Rosenfeld to a term expiring September 30th of 2020. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-099, town hall use application for the Giving Box fundraiser. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion?
Second.
It's Christmas in July, on 16th of July, from 10:00 to 4:00 for the Giving Box. Is there, it's, it's a charity to help prepare for Christmas.
Does anybody know what Giving Box is?
They have, I think they have.
There's a little description on the.
Yeah, no, no, I've read that. Does anybody have any?
Nope.
So you don't know that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-100, I'd like a motion and a second for purchase of a cemetery mower.
Motion. Motion.
Second? Go ahead. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, let me just say that the reason the cemetery, quote-unquote, department is not recommending any paid lowest bid, because we have a lot of bids, obviously, for the lowest, is that the lower ones don't have any rest in the equipment. So I guess I would suggest that we amend the resolution to add, whereas saying why we're rejecting the low bids, so. So, uh, anybody looking at our resolution in the future?
All right, I'll, I'll second the amendment to the resolution to add a whereas saying that we're rejecting the lower bids because they did not include a grease fitting.
Grease fitting, sorry.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment? Aye. Any opposed? All in favor of purchasing the Toro Z Master 3,000 for 67.19 and 4 cents? Um, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Joe. Um, resolution 2016-0101, may I have a motion in a second for the Recreation Aqua Zumba program?
Motion.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
This Cathy Gardner is an independent contractor. Is that what?
I don't know.
I'm assuming she's not an independent contractor.
I would assume.
That you are, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-102, recreational park concession stand contract. May I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
I'll second it. Uh, we're, um, a $200 rental fee for the summer season, which is up from last year. I think we had a successful season last year and we're sort of on our second trial year here. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any, all right, sorry, all right, take it back.
Uh, just, I think there are a couple of, uh, changes that we have to make in the contract. This is from the last year's contract. So, uh, I think what you're going to have Warren update this.
Update the contract for this year.
Uh, in paragraph 20, uh, the indemnity shouldn't include the terms these. And then maybe I try some, uh...
John, will you just, John, will you just make notes on this and...
Well, I can point it out to Warren.
So you'll update this and, uh...
Well, I'll call to Warren and I can...
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like a motion in a second for resolution 2016-103 for Recreation Department hires for 2016.
Motion.
May I have, thank you. Is there any, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-104, authorizing our highway superintendent to advertise for the 2017 material bids. May I have a motion and a second? Ed, may I have a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion in a second for resolution 2016-105 for the abandonment of West Miller Road? Motion in a second, please?
Motion.
May I have, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Hold, hold on. Joe, go ahead. All right.
Well, let's hear from the public.
Well, let you, ask your question first. Go ahead. And Barry's here.
Well, uh, public question. One, I don't understand what the process is. I wonder if the homeowner has consented. And I don't know who owns the land.
Okay.
If there's an abandonment or how this whole thing works. So I think we need some legal advice before we, uh, do this.
Okay.
But I'd really like to hear from the public.
Thank you. Uh, two people, would you like to, one come up first and just introduce yourself?
My name's Joe Weely. I live up on Buckwood Lane. And I was involved, uh, 20 years ago when, when Town Land Act tried to abandon Texas in the river. I understand that the bridge may need to be removed, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you need to abandon the road. If you close the road to motor vehicle traffic the way that it has been closed to motor vehicle traffic the last 20 years, you still maintain a valuable recreational asset there for people. All right, the fishing contest participants are in on that road for the three-week contest. Another recreational fisherman are in on that road at other times of the year. From a hiking path, from a walking path, that asset is very valuable to us. It's also a very safe way to get bicycles across Route 308 for people who live up in our development. So I would encourage the town board to split the issue into removing the bridge, which may be a hazard and you may have to remove the bridge from abandoning it.
Thank you. Uh, there's another.
Uh, I'm Bert Marter, also a resident of Buckwood. Uh, my concern is that, uh, you should, historically, the town should not, without serious consideration, abandon any right-of-way that they control. That particular section of highway has been part of the town highway system since before 1797. And just blatantly abandoning it is not, in my opinion, an appropriate approach to take. I understand that it's not necessarily the most appropriate place for traffic on a regular basis with 308 or next to it. But I agree with Joe that it has a lot of advantages for recreational. And another possibility would be even for a detour around the existing 308 culvert if there was some need for reconstruction or repair or whatnot. It could be used as a, a bypass right-of-way.
Isn't it not connected though? It falls off at the creek, right? It stops?
No, it crosses the creek.
All right, we'll hear from Barry. I don't know if there's an issue with the...
The barrier is at one end and it's...
Oh, the barrier, right.
At the other. Uh, it also mentions in the announcement that they received state and federal funds to assist in this. You don't have, know what that...
We're going to hear from our highway superintendent. He's here to speak about this because we're hearing about it for the first time tonight.
My feeling is certainly the bridge needs to be repaired. Work done on it. Uh, I would suspect that replacing it or rebuilding it in the old stone structure may not be the appropriate way to do it. But perhaps a, uh, Fox, small Fox culvert would be, uh, not terribly expensive and would serve the purpose of, uh, replacing the existing bridge and allowing that section to be continued to use for, uh, pedestrian, bicycle, or what have you. Kids, particularly kids fishing. Uh, that particular section is stream bank, in a way, is one of the, the best fishing spots.
Can't believe you said it in, in, on camera.
Pardon?
I can't believe you said it on camera. Kidding.
Yeah, you might have said that.
Gave it away.
Well, no, the kids all know what it is.
Thank you.
And the parents know. But, uh, I, I don't think abandoning any highway section that is now a part of this town is something we ought to do without real serious consideration.
Thank you. Um, Barry, did you want to speak to us about this?
I speak quickly.
Yep.
So just to give everybody a little background, on the, uh, it's a West Miller Bridge. It's the short section of road that loops around on the west side of 308. It's probably roughly a quarter mile long. And there's a bridge that crosses Lansman's Hill Street. When Hurricane Irene came through in 2011, the bridge was washed out. The bridge was built in 1903. It's laid on the fieldstone abutment. It's a Ford concrete bridge reinforced with old trolley rails underneath it. That's the steel reinforced aspect. So the bridge is canted on the abutment now and it's, uh, unsafe for vehicle traffic. So we closed the road. In the interim period between, or let me back up a little bit. We received FEMA funds and state emergency funds to deal with the bridge problem. Help be it either removing the bridge and the abutment or repairing the bridge, whatever would be necessary, to the tune of $6,500. Uh, the project was shelved. Nothing was done with it. Uh, nothing was considered, uh, for the bridge itself. So we just got an email from the state asking us what was going on with the bridge and was it, was the work completed? Would we sign off on it? And I said, well, we can't sign off on the work because it was never done. So that's why this project is coming back to the front burner for consideration. I don't have a preference in terms of what we decide to do with the land, whether we retain the land as a township or we do the legal abandonment process and turn it back over to whoever it would be appropriate we turn it over to or sell it to. Uh, my concern is from a highway superintendent perspective, is it in the interest, is it in the public interest for us to repair this bridge and maintain this road as a township? I don't believe it is from a vehicular standpoint because, uh, it would be a huge expense to rebuild this bridge for this little short section of road. I'm certainly not opposed to retaining the property as a township so that it's open for the kids to fish and whoever wants to walk through there. Uh, that wasn't my intent with the abandonment process. My intent solely, uh, to cover the public interest as a highway superintendent. And I don't believe it's in our interest to rebuild that bridge. I think, uh, what we should do is remove the deck and restore the stream bank as the D E C specifies to us. And then decide what we want to do further there in terms of the abandonment.
Is this something that we should refer to Warren to make sure, to, so that he could give us our... Are we clear on our legal options? I think there, there's a difference between maybe abandoning a road and certainly we want to retain the land for recreational use. Maybe we don't need to rebuild the culvert or bridge for vehicular traffic.
Right, we can, we can retain the land without maintaining the road. So that would certainly be an option in my mind.
Is this something that an attorney should weigh in on?
Yes, for sure.
Right? Can we, can we give it to Warren? And we'll also get your opinion on what the cost would be to do what we need to do to repair the bridge for vehicular traffic and to repair the embankment for fishing?
Both of them.
Does that sound like a good idea for it?
Uh, yes.
Hold on, hold on. Yes?
I think when you speak with the attorney, you'll find that you don't own the land itself. You own the right-of-way.
The right-of-way.
And those are valuable rights, of course.
So we want to retain the right-of-way?
Right-of-way.
Okay, whether or not it's for vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic.
And abandonment requires a whole public meeting and declare abandonment?
If we abandon the land?
If, if you abandon the right-of-way, you know.
Okay, so...
But we prefer to see the right-of-way kept for non-vehicular.
Okay, great. Joe, would you have a comment?
I have a question. For the fishing and for, uh, access to the stream, does one need a bridge or something to cross it? Or you just have to get to the stream so that construction would not be required?
Without a bridge, you would have to walk from one end into one side or from the other end into the opposite side of the creek.
But aren't you just walking from 308 to the creek?
The both ends of the road, uh, access 308. And the stream is roughly in the middle of that length of, 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 of unusable road at this point.
I'll drive over there if you were, Barry, I'll take you.
Uh, let me make a suggestion at this point. Uh, I'm not opposed to removing the existing bridge either. And if we are going to maintain it as a, as a right-of-way in the town, perhaps a simple, uh, uh, walking bridge over that section of the creek so that the kids could get the people could get from one side to the other.
Pretty spot.
Vehicles, bicycles and, and pedestrian bridge.
Good.
Well, but again, that's something that we would need to more study when I was superintendent. Because once we build it, we have to maintain it. And I don't think we have to decide that.
We're going to refer it to our attorney and get our...
Well, the attorney's not going to decide.
Hold on, hold on. Refer it to our attorney. We'll get guidance from him how we can retain it without vehicular traffic and what our options are. And we'll talk about it again.
Well, I think we need to explore, yeah? We're not...
We're not, we don't know. We, I think it's a good point. No one wants to lose the right-of-way. And that's a sweet spot, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming. Yeah, we're going to table this and refer it to Warren. John, will you send it to him tomorrow? Okay, uh, resolution 2016-106, accepting Dutchess County D P W, 2016-2017 Road Salt Bitting Award. May I have a motion in a second? Thank you, Ed. Second? Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Barry, the question I have is we have a contract that provides for $3.50 for stolen jack, plus, given, uh, 17. Do we have enough, uh, uh, storage so that, um, we don't have to repair that cost?
We will never incur a store of land on highway. I think I promised you that.
Thank you.
We will find a place to park it.
Thanks, Barry. Um, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-107 for the Dutchess County Shared Service Grant Application for jetback truck with the towns of Red Hook, Myland, Northeast, and Pine Plains and the village of Red Hook. May I have a motion in a second? Thank you. May I have a second? I guess the question that I have is, is this too many municipalities to share the jetback? Can we use it all year round?
We addressed that issue and we think it's doable because, uh, we each think probably two to three weeks, uh, per municipality. So that would be about 15 weeks total. And then some maybe unplanned stuff that we do down the road. So the jetback truck is kind of a specialized piece of equipment. Um, and I don't think five would be unreasonable.
But we're six. It's the towns of Red Hook, Myland, Northeast, Pine Plains, and the village of Red Hook. We'd be the six.
We would be the six, yeah.
Um, is it wet and dry back?
Yeah, it's got a high-pressure hose on it. It's used for clearing out culvert pipes. And it also has a dry back. And it also tends to vacuum wet slurry out of catch bases vertically. So it's, um, it's kind of a special-use truck. We, we rent them right now, usually for a week to two weeks at a time.
What's the rental cost?
I don't, I don't have it. I have to look.
All right, well, it's a grant from the county?
Yeah.
Any, any questions?
I guess my concern is, um, that we haven't done this before in terms of we, we being the lead. And I want to make sure that this grant, uh, won't pass enough money to pay for the attorney's fees. Uh, and with a lot of towns, each lawyer for a town is going to have comments. So they're going to run our attorney bracket. And, uh, we're going to build up the cost. So I don't know if this 400,000 is just for the equipment or how much we're building in. But in the previous grants, they've thrown in 5,000 for the attorney's fees for all the towns. And I think that would be totally inadequate.
You're the liaison to the department, right? You're the liaison to highway?
Uh, yeah.
Why don't you work with Barry to make sure that whatever we submit covers us?
Okay.
We're the lead. Right?
Yeah.
Are we in favor of going after this bid? The bids are due in, uh, month, uh, six weeks, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Um, yeah, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thanks, Barry. Resolution 2016-108, Dutchess County Secondary Shared Service Grant Application for boom mower and a tractor with the town of Red Hook. May I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Great. Sort of the same thing, Joey?
No, entirely different because there we're not acting as lead attorney.
Okay.
So it's...
As the lead town.
Yeah.
We're just taking a look.
This one is the routine that we've signed, I think, for some...
And just a background on that, we didn't want to leave any money on the table if we don't get the jetback.
A big grant or a small grant?
We wanted to have a small grant as a backup with the possibility of it. Because it's basically free money if we get the awards.
And it's a useful piece of equipment for us. Great, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, uh, resolution 2016-109, it's a local law repealing chapter 12561 of the Town of Ryan Beck code. I will make a motion. May I have a s... Second?
Second.
Yes, um, the clerk was just reminding me, and I have it written here, that we need to complete the E A F, uh, together. It's in the front of your binder here, the short environmental assessment form. I'll go through it and we can all agree if we say no or yes. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation by saying no? Does everyone agree?
Well, that is our...
Our attorney has asked us to do this.
No, I...
Publicly.
I can understand, but let me ask the question before I answer. Um, do we have recommendations from our planner as to how this should be filled out or from our attorney?
We have a recommendation that they're all know.
That they're all know. That they're all know, okay, so that is the recommendation.
But we need to fill this out.
I understand. You have recommendations.
Yes. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land use? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or the quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area or a CEA? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or a walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy options? We say no because we believe that the state has, has, has these guidelines in effect that are greater than what we were proposing. Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public or private water supplies? Or B, public water or private water waste mill utilities, treatment utilities? No for each. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? I.e. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Does anybody disagree with us? I have to do a roll call for the local law repealing Chapter 125-61 of the town of Rhinebeck Code. Is there any further discussion? Okay, by roll call, Elaine Fernandez?
Um, yes, in favor, Ed.
Aye, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on, Joe Gell?
Aye.
Ed Roberts? And Elizabeth Finzia? Aye. Thank you. Approved. Resolution 2016-111, a local law changing the meeting date of the town of Rhinebeck Board of Assessment and Review. This is a local law. Is there any further discussion on this? We've discussed it a couple of times. We are moving this to the Wednesday following the Fourth Tuesday of May. By roll call, Elaine Fernandez? Aye. Joe Gell?
Aye.
Ed Roberts?
Aye.
Elizabeth Finzia? Aye. Thank you. So moved. Resolution 2016-111, settlement of a tax search area petition. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Thank you, Ed. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This is a search area that was settled by our Karen Haxstrom, our search area attorney from formerly Garland. This is her recommendation that we settle it.
No, assuming this is also the recommendation, that's assessed.
Yes. She works with them, to settle them. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-112. 2016 season license agreement from the town of Rhinebeck for Farber Brothers, Inc. to use the town's waterfront facilities in connection with a water taxi route to Reinkliff and the Kingston waterfront. May I have a motion and a second? Thank you. Second, please? Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion on this?
The only discussion I have is I think we should make clear that we are using the kayak docks and not the dock that was formerly used, which is higher. I, we'll talk to Warren. I think it can be done by a simple amendment because I think the contract automatically carries over. You'll give notice by the time, I forget what it was, but I think it's already passed, so I think.
Isn't that the dock he used last year?
Pardon me?
It's the same dock that he used last year?
No, no, it's a different dock. I understand from Alan, because that dock we bought.
Oh, that was the one that needed the work that we didn't.
Repair, right. And I was told though that the repair is not needed and he's using a different boat and he can use the lower dock in the water.
But our other dock isn't going to be out, so this is the only dock we have to use, right?
Right, right. So, but the contract could be read to require us to, to the other dock. And the contract also says that the vendor has to make the repairs. The whole issue was to avoid repairs.
Okay, so do you want to amend the contract? Or work with Warren to amend it or, do you understand?
I sort of understand, but I do have a question. I mean, that larger dock, we've got larger vessels.
We, I think we didn't approve Bobby to fix it and he had a short window to do it. I don't know if he can do it at some point during the summer, but it's not.
Yeah, it's.
Well, I think Jeff Farmer had his people to work on in Kinston that were going to do it.
No, apparently there was discussion with Bobby that I wasn't, or with, with him. But it's about a, a, a lot, it's a several thousand dollar project to complete that repair which would be necessary to do it.
I say we approve this and look into more about what it'll take to fix the other dock. All right, thanks.
Right.
And we'll approve this contingent on you making the changes specific to the dogs.
Let me talk with Warren.
Thank you.
As to bigger ships, you know.
Right, I mean, that's important.
Well, the question is, do we want to finance bigger ships?
Well, we've had that subject for years and yes, I do.
Elaine will bring it to us and the board will decide if we want to, if we want to do it. Okay, so this, let's approve this and you will work with Warren to make the change so that it'll be contingent on that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Any new business before the board?
Yeah, actually I have one thing that I meant to bring it up sooner and it may need to be taken until next time and maybe give us some food for thought, but the dog kennel issue.
Yes.
As you know, the dog wardens, we were sharing the red hot dog warden services with our dog warden, Rhonda, for those moments because our dog warden works full-time. And so they have a very good relationship and she would come down and take care of the dogs when he was working. And in exchange, when their dogs in Red Hook needed to be kennelled, we kennelled them because Red Hook didn't have a kennel. And so the issue we have now is that the dog warden in Red Hook has resigned as the Red Hook dog warden. But she contacted me and is willing to continue coverage for a nominal fee to cover for Roger while he's working. Roger's extremely knowledgeable, so is she. They work very, very well together and I think her services would be considerably cheaper than if we tried to contract out to do that. So I am happy to work with her on some kind of contract to bring it before the board for the next meeting.
That'd be great. The other thing is, I've been talking to the Red Hook supervisor, Robert McKee, and Sarah Imboden is the liaison to dog enforcement there. Maybe reach out to her. I think they're going to go with the SPCA and they have a really good contract. They have, I think, a $14,000 a year contract, but it's for day only. They might need nighttime and weekend coverage. So, I'll see what you've got. Shake out. Thank you. Anything else, Elaine?
Nope.
Okay, we have two resolutions that are new business. Resolution 2016-113, it's the resolution authorizing the attorney to the town to execute an extension of the tolling agreement between the town of Rhinebeck and the Red Hook properties. May I have a motion and a second? Thank you, Ed. Second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-114, accepting donation of trees from the Village Tree Commission for the town hall of Rhinebeck. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Thank, uh, motion Elaine, second, Ed? Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, my only hesitation on this is that the tree that goes on the southwest side not be allowed to grow sufficient height that it creates a shadow on solar panels. I am hesitant to put a tree there. It has promised he will remember to infinity that it has to be.
But it's replacing a tree that came down.
I don't know how large that tree was. In fact, I don't even remember it as to the size. It's a big tree. But, well, a big tree, but again, we put a lot of money into that solar panels.
Do we want the tree to go up or do we want assurance from the arborist of the tree committee that are, that will be intact? We'll be able to get sun, it won't be that high. How do we want to proceed?
Barry, should move that. Right, Barry has also, I guess, agreed for infinity to make sure that tree doesn't.
Infinity.
So that none of us are around, somebody's going to remember.
As long as he's breathing.
That there are solar panels up there and they can create a problem.
And for the discussion, yeah.
On that condition that both of them are signing up.
We're all agreed here. The pictures, they're beautiful. Thank you to the Village Tree Commission and for the discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, I think we're done with our regular. We have some discussion items. We have a proposed, Ruggie's Automotive would like to speak to us about a possible zoning change and we have somebody here to make a presentation. Just as some background, this has been discussed with our land use attorney, our planning board chair, our zoning board of appeals chair, myself, and Sally Mazarello also set on two previous meetings. It's as, I think I forwarded to you, our policy for zoning amendments. Anyone can come to us, we vet it, bring it before the board, see if we want to proceed. And so we've had several informal meetings and now we're having a presentation to the town board.
We're going to leave four or five minutes just to.
Go ahead, take your time. Do you want to, do we want to take a two-minute break or if you guys? Can I make a motion for a three-minute break?
Yeah.
A second?
Sure.
All in favor? I'm going to take a five-minute break with this setup. Okay, we're back. You want to sit there? So you can sit?
Yeah.
Go, go, go.
Yeah, I don't know about.
Absolutely.
So Elizabeth, first a little, Dan will then speak to the petition itself and then Mark and Ken will speak to local planning on doing these.
Thank you.
I'll do my best to manage.
Thank you, thank you.
Quite a nice choreographer thing. Hi, I'm Kristin Pudgeon from Ruggie's Automotive. And we're here in front of you about a zoning proposal. We've come to the point with our business where our buildings are tired, worn out, too small, and in need of, you know, a lot of upgrading. So being a Chrysler franchise dealer, we are also required to maintain certain standards. And so we're going to, we would like to try to put our buildings close to their standards as possible and be able to facilitate the changes that we need to keep our business going forward. These are, you know, with a franchise company, it's important to have to do your best to whatever you can to keep up with their requirements as if you're not up to your facility standards in certain things that they're not going to provide you with, the vehicles, incentives, things like that. Kind of puts, kind of cuts your business right off. So really to keep our business moving forward, we feel that these are the necessities that we have to do now is opposing new buildings with the ones that we have that currently are just not worth repairing and putting additions onto. So from there, I'll let Dan go on to, but thank you.
Good evening. Nice to be here. Been employed a few times in the past.
I'm sorry, Dan, you are a local. What is your relationship to this?
You just introduced yourself.
I'm Dan Schuster, a planning consultant. And the consultants of the Ruggies on this project. And I consulted Mr. McGuire's zoning in Rhinebeck. I used to have a mustache, that's why I probably went three to.
I used to have a better memory, too.
Let me give you a little bit of background on why we're here and what the concerns are and what the suggested course of action being proposed is. Prior to 2009, map on the left in front of you, the Ruggie property, which is in yellow, was included in the Highway Business District as a use permitted subject to special permit. In 2009, the new zoning law redidiated the business district to eliminate two of the three Ruggie properties. And in addition, made auto sales not a permitted use in that business district. Essentially.
So the red line is what?
This is prior to.
Prior to is the red line?
These are our three properties here. They're all three over the highway.
Was the red line on the bottom or?
This is simply to make easier to see where it's located.
But somewhere down here it ended, right?
Well, I mean, this is.
Highway Business District. Old way.
Do you guys, do you guys understand where this is?
Yeah.
This is a way road. This is the cut over that goes, hold on. Here's the gas station. That's a blank where the drop clothing box is and that's another where the hot dogs stand, is right there.
The hot dog.
And these are the three properties owned by, this property here is the one of the, this is the property where the current, current facility resides. This is the property where the annex, where the car wash and years ago resides. And this is the property which we own, the home and.
The home, yeah, from Way Road.
Yes.
And then this is the cemetery.
Right. The way of the property, the little statue.
And the car wash.
Then this property.
That was purchased before 2009. Before our.
We had approved site plan for the use of that one. And that's where we released, where we was this and made this section of property unusable in agreement to maintain this, maintain this cemetery.
Oh, so you maintain that cemetery? Oh, and all that?
We, I don't think we maintain the cemetery, but we, there's a piece of property to the south of this, one of these other, it's a big lawn adjacent to the cemetery.
Here's your cemetery here on this property. This whole section here is conservation use area. And we gave that, that was one of the conditions of our buying the property. We gave that up and we had a site plan approval to use from here back of the property. Again, that was part of 2009 and that was then Highway Business. But again, if you're doing so, this section was provided to use. And then, so this is the change in 2009. Now we have residential, residential, a corner business. So this is the only business district that Dan referred to. And in this business district, our sales is forbidden.
So your grandfather, non-conforming use.
Yeah, it's been, so the use is non-conforming in both the two districts which is presently is located.
And the reason why we zoned it like that according to the people who did the comp plan was to stop the development creep crawl on the corridor, on the gateway to the town.
We would, we would make the, the argument that those two parcels that were eliminated really do not extend any strip commercial. They really, the rear property is the frontage on.
Okay, well, let's go ahead. What are your, your.
And then the proposal is to essentially recreate the pre-2009 status, include the entire Ruggie property in what's now the Crossroads Business District as opposed to what used to be the Highway Business District. And to make auto sales subject to various conditions permitted by. permitted by a special permit. That's, that's what the petition that will be before you will include, following the procedure that you, this board adopted several years ago on the submission and preparation.
No, I forwarded that to all of you again this week, you got it.
Okay, I have that.
I can print it, we can print it out there, too.
I understand you wanna make sure all the yellow is within a commercial thing, but are you suggesting you go outside that?
This is existing, that's the existing.
Oh, that is existing.
The proposal is to, sort of this line around, just to include those two properties, which were eliminated from the previous.
Okay, so it's an arrow thing to just, wow.
How is it not spot zoning?
It's not spot zoning, it's, it's an existing, no, it's an existing, part of an existing business district, which, as it happens, previously allowed those uses. Those properties are distinctly different in terms of use than other properties in the area. And I would give you chapter reverse, but it does not meet the standards for spot zoning. It's, if anything, you could make the argument that excluding the spot zoning.
So you'll make the?
That would be hard condition.
But, you know, it's not that much different than what we did with the, it used to be the flowers there, we just dealt with the one parcel, and the work of wire, we dealt with that, but I guess we'll need some legal backup.
Yeah, certainly we'll, to address that, and frankly, by and large, we're reinventing the wheel, and this is a situation with order of uses on that quarter, most properties existed for thirty, forty years, and were made non-conforming, but struggled ahead in 2009. What's being proposed is a zoning amendment, which would change the zoning boundary, which would reestablish automobile, auto sales uses under specific conditions relating to the issuance of a special permit.
When you say a special permit, that means whatever you want to do has to go before the planning board?
It has to go before the planning board for both the special permit and site plan approval. Correct.
Would you make this proposal, would you make the design of the building a part of this proposal, are you proposing to do that?
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm going, we're proposing, we recognize there's no mystery to the fact that this zoning change is being made for the purpose of allowing development of a new facility on that site. So we've, treating it as one or two combined related actions, it will be dealt with under seeker, as a, but the zoning is one half of the action, the development of the site is the second part, and review of all the secret documents that way. Both before this board and before the planning board will be the proposed site plan and architectural treatment of the building, which would result from the zoning amendments upon it.
So, does that come before us or before the planning board?
The zoning change comes before you.
Right.
And you, according to your procedures, will refer the zoning change to the planning board.
So that the building design will not come before us? Let me, okay, let me just.
First of all, it's something you're gonna have to decide whether you or the planning board will be the lead agency.
We will be.
In that case.
The lead agency for what?
Under seeker.
For deciding whether to make the zoning change?
Well, under seeker, the first thing that has to happen is the determination of significance as to whether the zoning change and the resulting site plan and building development as a result of it will have a significant effect on the environment on that. And you'll go through, you went through a short seeker form before, in this case, you'll be going through a longer seeker form because the property is adjacent to a starred site, cemetery, that was mentioned before. So you, the lead agency will have to go through and evaluate both the implications and effects of the zone change, and the resulting development of the site with the site plan and building as proposed. So, if this board elects to be the lead agency, you'll be considering all of that. Your other option would be to allow the planning board as the other involved agency, which has an equal amount of interest, to serve as lead agency.
Lead agency as whether we change the zoning law?
Lead agency for the purposes of the determination of significance under seeker.
We've been the lead agency in the past, and I believe we would continue, I would certainly advocate for us being lead agency.
Obviously, that's, that's up to you.
I think that puzzles me.
Hold on, Joe, Ed was a little before you.
We have a site plan on the new development that we could look at.
We're coming, we're getting it, we're getting it, all right.
Let's hold the, let's, do you wanna ask your question now?
I guess the thing that puzzles me is, I just, by accident happened to see something about the Ford agency for the planning board, and I know the planning board was certainly sympathetic to the idea that if the car companies, only franchisees, you gotta do it, you gotta do it, but at least the planning board, I guess, was concerned as to whether there was some flexibility so that maybe the proposal could be tailored in a way to keep the rural character of the buildings yet satisfied the requirements of the car company and.
Joe, that's the exact issue that came up in the previous two or three meetings that we had, everybody recognizes that, you know, Ruggie's, their Subaru dealership in the village is marquee, you know, blending in with the village.
Terrific, and I fully agree, and hopefully they come up with something that looks like that.
Well, let me just, here in our zoning, what our zoning law says is that the station or facility shall reflect the traditional architecture of the community and building and roof forms, window proportions, materials, colors, and details, all four sides of the building shall be designed with windows and other architectural features to avoid blank visible walls, that's in our zoning law, and our comp plan has two very clear objectives, that development along highways in the town should be in keeping with Rhinebeck scenic and historic character, and that new commercial development should be compatible with the setting, scale, and architecture of existing features. One of the concerns was that we not erect a cookie cutter, you know, three-story, you know, that, that it be, yes, that it be in keeping with our character. So I think within.
There's been a number of meetings, and I think we listened to what the votes had all had to say about that, but I think when we get to that section of this, you would be, I would like it, they should be very surprised that both representatives.
Let me just wrap it up by, as Scott said, there's been a lot of, a lot of changes since the meetings that were had earlier, we think there's merit to the proposal, merit to the benefits of the town, moving along, let Mark Lovinsky will go through and discuss the site plan, as this was proposed, and then the final discussion will be the architectural treatment itself.
No, I appreciate you have lots of meetings, but for those of us who were not at those meetings, your coming to us cold, and so that's, you're upcoming, so we'd wanna be educated if we got above that on something.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's no, no ask on our behalf of any votes, this is a preliminary, our petition has not been filed.
It's, you're taking our, it's a, you know.
We're more sure we do where we're at, and we think we've made huge steps based upon our previous meetings, and before we just put petition in front of you, we wanted to fill this up.
Thank you.
If you should.
But again, my one question is, are we the appropriate people to pass on the design or exactly what the planning board's function, and keep an open mind, and do it, and do they wanna, I just, and.
Let me just say it again, I would support this only if we did have the approval of the design, I'm concerned about that, and I, you know, I know that, you know, the corporation is here to work with us, I would be loath to turn it over to the planning board, I would be loath to do a zoning change with, is it segmentation even if we do?
We're deliberately deploying segmentation by including in the action, the zone change development plan, which includes the architecture.
We turned a lot to the planning board in including implementation of the whole zoning law, but I have an open mind, I don't think we have to argue.
Well, we're not, oh, just make, this is, this is also what set precedent for the other two corners, so.
Will there be any errors?
Yeah, it's a, it's a local law, so there would be, yeah.
So, good evening, I'm Mark Lovinsky, I'm a consulting engineer, Lance Barry here, representing Ruggie's Automotive. So, as I previously mentioned, there's been several meetings that have, members of the planning board and some members of the town board, in order to work towards development for this, for this zoning change consideration, you know, which has led to discussion of what to do with, you know, changes to the, to the existing site, and also the architecture. So, excuse me, I'm here to address what changes are being proposed for the existing site. I'll do it quickly, because on the other side here, I have what's being proposed, so I'm just gonna quickly cover existing conditions, because I think it's important to do that, because that's what, you know, was considered as part of West Horn to be proposed, we tried to, since we are coming in front of both of these boards, town and planning board, to, you know, have to take that opportunity to, to make changes to the site that certainly worked better for the dealership, and then also for consideration of certainly the town's standards and what Ruggie's wanna see, you know, for ultimate development of the site. So, Dan had briefly touched on, we're dealing with three properties here, and so this is just a little bit of a larger plan of that. This is actually, this piece right here on the 990 intersection, right here, that's where the existing dealership is, so that there's two, two buildings, this is where the showroom is, and this is where service takes place. And then, as you know, there's parking right along the frontage of Route 9 and 9G, and so that's this piece here, access, there's three access points, one off of Route 9G here, one off of Route 9, and another one here off of Way Road. I'm just gonna, you know, walk through the parcels, just trying to give you a brief overview of the site. Then, as you go through, there's also an additional piece that's being used for, for the automotive dealership, and so this, and once again, this used to be part of the commercial zone, our Rhinebeck entrance is right here.
Kind of up a hill.
Yeah, it was up a hill, that's right, Joe, and so right here, so, so here's the boundary line, so what's being used here is there's some cars, you know, that, there's, you know, for display and for storage of vehicles, so there's a parking area over here, so that's the second parcel for consideration, and then finally, you know, part of this entire process includes what was, you know, the, what used to be the car wash, and I actually was involved, that was the engineer that made application for Ruggie's, it was, you know, defined as Ruggie's annex, where the, this is the old car wash building here, and so they used that for preparation, you know, vehicle preparation, so associated with it, access is off of Way Road, and then there's parking area here, there were some plantings that were done as part of that site plan approval, and, and also, they, you know, did mention, you know, during that application, so that, you know, a conservation easement was developed along this section of Route 9, adjacent to the cemetery. So that, you know, that's just a quick overview of the existing conditions, if you could just.
So just, you know, for, if, you know, you haven't, aren't familiar with, you know, or want a quick refresh of the site for that.
So then here, dual quivers, and so what I did is, so the shooting areas represent where the existing buildings are now, and then the annex is here, right? So, so as part of this proposal, the idea was to, you know, provide a more efficient site plan, you know, for the entire operation. So now what's being proposed, once again, I'm gonna start, well, actually, I should just, just one other thing to, to mention, so I, so when we started with existing conditions, there are three separate parcels in there, so part of this application, Dan didn't get into it, but it's some of the detail that's related to, you know, the zone change, not the zoning text change consideration, is combination of all these properties. So now, so you know, notice that there's no longer a division line here, right? So it's now, they're not all considered as one parcel. So, access still, so I'm gonna start with the access again, try to run through it the same way, access still remains the same, the points of location are still gonna remain the same. Where we made some changes, and, you know, based on great input from the committee that we met with and how Ruggie's wanted to develop the site, is that what you don't see is, is the, you know, before, some of that existing parking actually encroaches over into the state right away, you know, because of the way that they constructed the curving. So now the parking is now pulled further, it's, there's a reduction in parking along the frontage of Route 9 and 9G, and it's pulled further back away from the road, and associated with that is, you know, now, as, as all part of the consideration of the development of the site plan, where now, all the components are considered when you, when you start to think of what, what you're gonna go through for a new site plan approval. We're gonna look at, you know, traffic flow through the site, parking, landscaping, lighting, other, all those visual things that are, you know, that are important as part of site plan approval, and that's what's gonna be considered, you know, in to get to this point, to develop these plans. So, once again, you know, parking is proposed in these areas through here on the front of the building, so now, I know, maybe a little confusing, but now, this here is, instead of having two separate buildings on the site, there's just a single building, so this is now going to be the showroom facility, all service is going to flip over to here, all service is gonna be done in this area here. So, some of the, you know, some of this space that was, you know, initially used on this, on this corner property is now going to be transferred over, over to here, further away from Route 9. So, a new, new showroom building here, and then, you know, offices, you know, related to, to that business aspect of the, of the dealership, and then, what's, what's also done is, and as I said, with the, with the parking along here, landscaping's been added, and I have a final plan that I can, you know, quickly show some of the landscaping that's being proposed through there, and in doing that, in the reduction of some of the parking that was originally along, along 9 and 9G, we've now expanded to the, it would be to the, to the east and to the, to this other property, remember that lot line used to go through here, now have parking through there, and so picked up additional parking for the.
That's parking just for your inventory?
Inventory, yes, it's, it's for inventory, and so, the, you know, the goal of doing that was, it's, you know. And so, the, you know, the goal of doing that was, it's, you know, inventory parking, but as, Joe, as you mentioned, it's, you know, there's a hill there, and it's all wooded area. And so the idea is that, that woods is all going to remain around that parking area. So there's, you know, very little, you know, there's just simple access to this, parking, landscaping, that's going to be associated with that. And as I mentioned, once again, it's all, you know, redevelopment of this site, consideration of store owner management. Now, all the store owners being picked up and treated, appropriately treated and discharged. So that's, excuse me, that takes, that takes place through not only, you know, the showroom property, but also the service area. That's a consideration for everything. So, you know, that is now, you know, would be in full compliance with the requirements of the town of Rhinebeck. And then shifting over to the, to the service area, once again, access on, still remains off the Way Road. The building, service building is now in this area, it's right through here. This parking remains the same as it is now, this landscaping remains the same with some, with some minor change located to the north towards Rhinebeck Key Park. And then finally... One more thing, this area here today is 14,000 square feet, we'll be reducing that by one-third. So the building now will be visible and on this original lot will only be two-thirds the size of the current footprint.
So there's a, you're cleaning up some of those visual corners, is there an addition on the service area?
Yes, there is an addition.
So overall square footage goes up?
Our overall square footage goes up by 3,000 square feet.
But that corner is a little cleaner.
But the corner was down by 5,000 square feet.
So it's up in the annex area?
Yes, right. The roof is up here, and the reduction is down here.
Where's, I think it's the most visual.
There's 14,000 square feet today, 9 is proposed, and up here there's 3,000 square feet, 11 square feet. So we're moving much of that space up there to plus the vision.
So the 3,000 goes to 11, and the 14 goes to 9?
And those are round numbers. And then finally, this is just a, this is just a visual, try to provide a visual, you know, an initial, I need that, just a visual of, you know, the landscaping and, you know, considerations. So the darker green, the darker green is going to be, that's existing, it's going to remain existing. So here is lawn, trees in here, trees in here, trees along through here, same thing, all these trees remain through here, same thing in this corner along, so along Way Road and along 9G, and this is all, this existing remains the same. wider green is where some, you know, landscaping improvements are proposed. So it's, you know, so, you know, a list of, this is, what's it, kind of garden, area of this, so it's just a list of, you know, appropriate shrubs around, you know, parking areas in the dealership, and then plantings, we're going to have some, you know, plantings that are associated with store owner management areas, so they're, you know, it's wetland type vegetation. So just, this is just, you know, an overall visual. This is probably the only place that's actually expansion of the grid. Today we're parking...
Cars are right up to the curb.
Right up to the curb, yeah. So this, this all pushed back, and then buffered upon the pushback.
It just simplifies the corner.
Okay. All right. What everybody's been waiting for. So is that a sort of, yeah, if you jump in, all right.
Well, my name is Ken Cyrus, and Cyrus is a restorer. So a little bit about us, we do a lot of car launches, we have over 10 in design in our office right now, I'm a man, I'm not even in, of course, Ruby's. So what we have done originally is, if anybody's ever seen a Chrysler dealership, it's always sleek metal, a lot of storefront, a lot of glass, and from our meetings, it was pretty obvious that that was not going to fly, but it's kind of Rhinebeck, so Ruby's charged us with coming up with something that could be more amenable to them. So what we've looked at is, we've looked at the design code, and the design code really calls for a lot of natural materials, so we're going to use stone, fiberglass siding, but we need to try to...
I'm sorry, what did you say after stone?
Fibersman siding, it's a, it's a, it's a year's siding material.
So it's like a, it's a...
Or a blackboard, or it's a...
But it's like a hundred board, or...
Well, a hundred board is not as good as fiberglass.
Or some paddy board.
Yeah, paddy board, I guess, right, yeah. So, what we had to do, well, what the Ruby's really charged us to do is come up with a design that can hopefully meet the town of Rhinebeck's expectations for their design code, but also try to get, you know, something that we feel could be approved by Chrysler. So we really wanted to keep the marquee arch, which is what you see here, which is their signature element. We have a bracket stone, a field stone, we have the toolings with the four marquees, windows, peak roofs, same siding, so nice brackets. That's the view right there.
Same length as our Subaru store.
Love a Subaru store.
So we have a couple of different views.
So these are just views from the, different angles.
North west perspective. Yeah, that's facing the gas station.
This would be, the gas station would be here, you can park in between the building and the gas station.
I'm on the north west looking.
Here on Route 9, going south to northeast.
Okay.
Route 9 coming south. And this would be Route 9 heading north.
That's the main sales building, so we have a lot of non-traditional Chrysler elements here, the sulking roofs, the gables, windows, no storefront, no metal panels whatsoever. So...
And that's the extended signage too?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a pylon sign.
There's a, there's a pylon sign, sure, day.
With the existing signs.
But this is the extent of the building sign.
Oh, the pylon sign, would we name it?
Can I have an example of the right terms of...
Yeah, area, but we have the numbers on that.
It's not conforming. Can I see the existing corner? Yeah, actually, from our, from our... Just so you know, that signage is not in compliance with what, I mean, what you have on this front of the building right now would require...
It's all, it's all part of the petition.
But it would require variance.
And under the, under the current code, with regard to signage, yes, it would.
That's the ones that, that's my building, you saw.
And this is all presupposing that anything going forward with landscaping would also be part of site plan approvals. So looking at that right now, anyone accepting that would not be accepting that landscaping.
Well, no, no, that's not, so this rendering doesn't, is the building, we're not trying to represent the landscaping in the render.
Okay.
This, this is for all, this is the building, yeah. The landscaping is not represented, but if we put all the landscaping, you'd miss some features of the building, which is what you, they obviously...
That's why there's only one conference.
A recollection of the Ford thing was that one of the objections, or let me rephrase it, that one of the requests of the planning board was to see if they could remove that front sign, that big sign that said Ford. I don't know if Ford would agree that that could be done.
Well, that was going by a sign variance, right?
Yeah, so I happened to work on it for a bit.
Just one thing though, Joe, just to go back, we did work, as Mark knows, for a couple of years, at least, with Ford, and one of the things that's very different is that Ford dealership was keeping the existing building, as opposed to this, which is a new build, if you will. But then the sign went in differently.
Right, and so, and so, you know, with regard to Ford in time, there was actually some change in ownership through there too, so it did get extended, but it was also with the, you know, several meetings with the planning board and cooperation with the planning board that we were finally able to develop the site plan, and to actually gain site plan approval. But we actually just went to zoning board appeals for, request for three items. And those three items that we requested was, and they were area variance requests, so an area of variance for front yard setback on parking, just because of the existing condition.
But we'd be dealing with all of that within this amendment?
Yeah, I was just, well, with the exception of one thing. And so I'll, well, I'll just get right to that, is signage. And so, when you actually, when you go through the code for Rhinebeck Ford, it's based, signage, calculation of signage is based on the number of linear feet that you have frontage that you have on a highway, or a maximum of 30 square feet for the entire signage for the site. And so, in this case, we certainly, you know, and so a plan was submitted and considered by the planning board, and so the signage that was proposed included keeping those existing signs out on 9G that Ford had, in addition to including, you know, a lettering that's attached to the building. That application was made to the ZBA for an area variance for the allowable area of signage, and I shouldn't, I mean, it's still under consideration, but it seems like the ZBA is favorable, so does that change?
But with regard to this project, what you're saying signage would not be a part of CECL or any...
Dan, can you help me out with that one?
I mean, why wouldn't it be part of what we consider based on visual impact?
Well, the basic ground rules will be proposed in terms of the area of the signs, given the nature of the use. That would be part of the zoning amendment, it will be before you, and part of the CECL determination, the visual, that will be how using those standards affects the visual quality of the building and the area around it.
Okay, so the broad strokes would be out for us, and the finer strokes wouldn't for signage?
Well...
Within the zoning amendment, we would, we wouldn't need it.
Well, within the zoning amendment, you will have some basic standards in terms of size, location, et cetera.
I'm assuming you wouldn't need variance, zoning variances, because we'd be dealing with it always.
That would be the goal, right? That might be everything. So we'd be the goal to establish the zoning so that the variations aren't required.
So assuming we, our lead agency, we would determine the size of the signs?
You would determine the environmental significance of the proposed standards, and how they, and how those standards are replicated or utilized on the buildings that you'll be looking at as part of the architectural design.
So the short answer is that we, if we decide with the lead agency, we determine the size of the signs, in conformity with this, that that's what you're asking us to do?
Correct.
But also remembering, as you're going through that process and making decisions, that you have two other other zones.
You have to develop.
Just remembering that as you're...
This sets precedent.
That as you're examining your choices here, there's potential on two other...
I understand, but we're not being asked to change the zone in the, let me just finish this, but in those other corners. Those other corners are still zoned, not a part highway, share, pretty special. The what?
It's the same zone. They're already in the, they're already in the district.
Highway business district.
They are, and subject to, among others, restrictions that automotive uses are not currently allowed.
So the other corner, automotive is not allowed?
But it's not allowed where we are today, either. Rollins Square District, what we're proposing is a change based on a special use permit, based on that special use permit, certain criteria will have to be met for that permit to be applicable. Those are the pieces of the pie that we're going to propose that are going to make it very restrictive for just anybody to apply this special use permit. So it's not going to be, there's going to be conditions that you have to, you know, whether it's a certain number of acres available to you to apply that special permit, or linear distance from another certain type of business, there'll be constraints, so that if you want an acre of properties in the CB district, you can't settle a set of selling caps. Not going to be that simple. A special use permit will apply those things, and that's what will be in the zoning that we petitioned for.
So are you, are you asking us for anything tonight, or are you just presenting?
No, we're presenting, just wanted to bring you up.
I guess I'm still somewhat confused with what we decide with respect to, what's called the Ruby parcels. Does that necessarily mean we have to decide something as to the other corners?
I'm sure.
What?
Maybe, actually.
Yeah, so, yeah, but...
Are you suggesting that somebody else can petition us based on the deciding precedent?
I'm saying you have to...
Answer that question.
Could we intend to address that, or give you a way to address that, in our petition?
Can I see the business district, the three schematics again?
And the red is the business district?
No, the red is just, yes, the red is the corner, CR is the corner business district, it's in the inside of the red aisle.
All of this is currently is in the other corners?
The existing CRV district.
He didn't believe that our petition would make it readily available for somebody else to do the same thing.
But if somebody else wants to do something in the highway district, the other corners, they would have to go in front of the planning board?
They would say, so, they would be forced to come, if they want to sell cars, which is what we're proposing, they would have to come forward to you as well, unless they were able to fall within the special permit constraints in which you're pushing.
Because we're changing, oh, because you're asking us to say that in any commercial business district, that you can sell cars?
Not in any, only in this, this is the only place in the town that this CRV district exists.
I think.
And what's being proposed is...
So if we add a use to it, right, in fact, are you asking us to add a use?
Yes.
To it, which says you can sell cars, you're saying...
Subject to certain ground rules.
Subject to certain ground rules, the other corner, the other two corners, which don't have anything on them yet.
Could be cardio shoes.
Could be.
They have, depends on how the ground rules or other conditions are there.
I ask that already? Yeah, I guess I'm still confused as to why, say, I'm the owner of one of those other corners, I don't have an argument for you having spot zoned this corner.
There's two approaches, frankly, we're still talking about. We know the objective is not to, you know, cardio is all over the corner. One we've discussed about is having a minimum acreage as part of the requirement for a special permit, which would be seven acres excluded, and it would not include wetlands or protected streams or so forth. The Ruby parcel at the moment is the only one which satisfies that standard. Another approach, frankly, we're talking about, and it's one which is used elsewhere in your zoning law, is to establish a distance requirement between automotive uses. You presently have a standard in the zoning law which does not allow one gas station within a mile of another gas station. I believe there's a similar requirement for fast food establishments. The same procedure could be used in automotive sales, uses have to be a certain distance apart.
The only problem is that we already have one near five, so would that, here is getting a monopoly to one company?
Well, no, it'd be a quarter of a mile, it depends what the business establishes.
But these are the only two, what you're saying is CR-B district, that's the only one in town, so if you said another...
That's crossroads business, right?
What?
Crossroads business.
Oh, crossroads. But it has to be a mile away. But it has to be a mile away, but in fact, they couldn't do it because there is no other district.
Well, you know, there are other business districts, actually, none of the other, the only other district...
Did you have an automotive in another district?
The only other district permitted is this, uh, BP district, or the Ford places. The other commercial districts in town do not allow automotive sales.
So, Ford is here.
Yes.
This is the only, only business zoning that has, you can sell cars with special permit.
What about, what about, don't we have a square footage of...
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand square feet? So, you're saying one building is, tell me the square footage again?
One's nine and one's one.
Okay, so how would we get around our square footage requirement?
What we proposed, well, the, the special permit conditions, uh, in some cases will exceed or be different than standards used elsewhere in zoning law. And that's to avoid many variances.
Once again, it's only particularly the special business.
Just one of, the seven, you were throwing out the concept of seven acres as minimum?
Yeah.
And that would theoretically...
Seven acres is total acres, but it also disallows the use of wetlands and, and other non-buildable.
But, so the other corners, the other two corners are not seven acres?
They're not, and if you combine them, they eliminate the wetlands and whatnot.
But they're not seven acres as they, which is today? But there would be nothing preventing, say, I think Sarukas owns the southwest corner. Were he to acquire other parcels along the line, or he or any other single person buying other parcels could achieve seven acres?
But they would also achieve them outside of the business district? And then would be back in front of you today arguing that you need to further extend the business district in different directions?
So, there's no potential way of achieving seven acres within what you're proposing?
Not if you, not all by, with the elimination of wetlands and other lot of ways.
Other constraints?
Yeah.
And perhaps another approach is we would just combine both of the, the approaches, the acreage and the distance requirement. And you could say that if within a mile in this zone, you know, and if you go a mile, there's no other, this is the zone. And a mile, and three hundred feet, you're out of the zone. So, that same language.
Has Warren?
No, we need, this is the first public, we have to get an attorney involved. We have to, no, this is the first.
A lot of that, yes.
Yeah, I, this is the third or fourth time I've heard it, so I'm a little...
Yeah, this is branding.
Do you have handouts for us, or can you get us color copies of these presentations?
Elaine, John Williams has been involved in some of the preliminary conversations. So, your land use attorney has had some participation.
And Melody, and Sharon, and, and Scott Bergen.
I'll leave any color photos.
Would you? Yeah.
This summarizes much of what we have. So, relax the color photos, so I'll just...
It's a working, that emphasis on the workers and the students.
Thank you. I'll take one for Alan and the clerk if you don't mind. All right, do you have more to tell us, or? Do you guys want, because you chew on this for a little while?
Yeah.
Yeah? Let, let me just say for members of the, of the town board, um, the concern of those who, those of us who were involved initially was that revision, there are a lot of very positive things that have been brought forward regarding improvement to the site plan of the property.
The visual look of the corner.
The property. And we feel that what is being talked about has the potential to really improve the corner. It is by all measures, by all standards, the gateway to the community, certainly at most, in these two directions coming into Runda, possibly others. Our concern was not with the site plan, but with the architecture of the building. Because the things that were in place when we were talking about the eight thousand square feet, we haven't placed standards that don't allow drivers. There were very deliberately things put in the comprehensive plan that would deter big box franchises from taking Runda and taking over what we consider, considered to be our building. So, I will say that the first, first architectural designs we saw were not pleasing, but did, you know, the box and franchise. What they brought for us tonight is a vast improvement over what we've looked at before, and I think opens the door to conversation. Um, but those of us who met before were not in favor of rezoning unless we were to achieve an architectural design from that that we felt fit our comprehensive plan and our zoning. So, the conversation is important, dialogue's important, and I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into moving this...
They're very thoughtful.
Moving this in a direction that I think is, you know, we heard, we hear a lot about Chrysler branding, but I think the comprehensive plan is Runda's branding.
We're the, we're stewards of the...
You know, we're really not looking to take away, you know, we need to start this, and we do have to, we do have to provide a certain standard to our, our brand. Um, you know, I, you know, I hate to hear the big box in reference to, just because you're a franchise, and your local stations are a franchise, your CBA is a franchise, too, it's not, you know, it's not a franchise, you know. We, we do need to keep selling, and we're trying to, you know, we're doing whatever we can and trying to make everything work.
I keep going back to Subaru, you know, I'm like...
Yeah, and if we have some changes we have to make there, we're actually going to make changes, and that because we have to, we're not...
We understand that, we understand that, you know, the corporate, corporate is putting pressure. They won't deliver you cars, they won't pay you, what, we understand.
And it's a bit of a weird, you know, they have the minimums. So, that's what we're trying to commit to, you know, we're not, we're not looking to be bad homeowners and putting up, you know...
We always thought that we could partner with you in working with your corporate, you know, corporate to work, to deliver something that's acceptable to our town. You know, we thought that we could, and, you know, you're, you're, you're a lot further than there than you were the last time you did.
And we're still willing to, you know, I mean, there, no conversation is taking place either the minimum of the planning board, the town board, or others, where we don't say this is a business that this community values and wants to stay here. And whatever we can do, either at any board level, through zoning department, through anything, to work with Chrysler, should they wish us to, should you wish us to be involved, we're willing to do that. But I do want to go back to, I saw, um, vast improvement in what we proposed tonight, and so, I, I think really, um, at least from where we're looking at it, from site plan, from special use permit, in terms of what we would approve. I want to see more landscaping personally, but...
Well, let's, you know, we, this is a long process, it'll come before the town board. We do, we do have issues about, you know, all the things we raised, I think, about the special use permit and what would happen to the other corners, and I think we need to make a decision of, you know, get our attorney involved, or wait until we hear from you.
Again, a lot of questions, of course, can start, we have a discussion with everybody here. Now, when you say "we," is that the planning board, or that's you?
No, no, it's not.
Are other, the people in the planning board involved in this?
The process that we've been going through in, in complex situations like this is John convenes interested parties, as well as Sharon and myself and Art Road, and we begin to talk with the other...
Of course, Art's been involved.
Art's been, well, from the beginning, we talk about, um, the sort of, um, the concept, um, what would, what would be involved, what would be doable. Now, those conversations are not about what we like or what we don't like necessarily, but what can be achieved? How can it happen? And, and frequently, we go through a couple of those meetings. Mark, Mark is there, Dan's been there, um, you know, Scott's been present. We brought Sally Mazzarella in early on because Dan, in the very beginning, asked the questions of, why were these changes made in the comprehensive plan and the zoning? Was it a mistake? Well, no, Sally was able to say, no, it was a deliberate decision on the part of the comprehensive plan and the zoning to do this. So, that's the sort of give and take. I'm not speaking for the planning board here, um, by any means. The planning board has not seen any of this, um, and I expect they would have their own individual opinions, and, um, we will come to a decision as a group.
Just as I did speak for the town board when I met, this is the first time.
Okay. Now, what role does Chrysler Corporation play in this? Once you come up with a design that...
Then we take, we take our design, once it's approved, and we have design documents, and then we submit to them for their approval.
At which point, we also do some, a lot of lobbying. If, if we had a...
Are they involved in the process at all?
They won't get involved until we have design documents, actually.
But you said, you said design approval. You wouldn't get local approval until you had signed off on Chrysler?
No. Chrysler will not, this design does not meet their proper standard. They have a document that says, here's what we're expecting. Our designs do not meet that. Therefore, they're not interested in having a conversation with us until we have approval to go forward and have building documents, to which point we'll submit them, at which point they will, as part of the franchise agreement, take them under consideration and review based upon the constraints that we're under.
So, you could go through a revision and...
I could spend a tremendous amount of money.
And to, and you could go before the planning board and you could get, go all the way through the process and get planning board approval before you would go with Chrysler?
We have no choice, that's the process. The Chrysler, this is not their standard design, this is not what they're asking for.
The millennial standards are online, I can go look up one.
Yeah, you can see the...
So, if we were doing that, we would come to you, we already have building designs, we have building documents, and then be happy to sit and approve or to review them, assuming they're approved. This, it's, you know, it's the cart and the horse, who's going to be ahead? Their point is very clear, if you're under constraints in your town, and we understand that you're not the first dealership in the end town to have stored. The plan is, you get your approval, you come to us with the best design, kind of maintaining as many of the features, and if we can approve it, we will approve it.
Now, you're using the planning board, but I guess what you're suggesting is that the planning board doesn't have a role in this other than maybe recommendations to us?
No, 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 we're not suggesting the planning board does, we're not suggesting that at all. The planning board has all of the steps in which Melanie's organization has to go through to approve it. The concept is, I, I think, and Dan mentioned, jump in here, we're doing two things at once. We're asking for a zoning change, and based upon that zoning change, we're asking for a design acceptance.
We would be accepting the design as part of the zoning change.
Right, so...
And the planning board, you would, you would refer it. We would refer it to the planning board, the conservation advisory board, we would hope that there would be no zoning, um, you know, easement, no...
Right, and if they would come back, under ideal circumstances, they'd come back to the approval, then you would approve the zoning, at which point we would then have, could go to building documents and submit to Chrysler for what we hope would be approval. And again, we would, our case to them would be to go back to your comprehensive plan and say that we've done the best we can to design a facility to meet your requirements and to meet the town's requirements. And this is the best we could have.
I'm still confused, though.
It's, it's, I don't know.
Are you asking, we can ask the planning board for advice.
You might even be able to refer it.
We have to refer it to the planning board.
We have to ask them, but the referral is for advice. You're not the planning board, under your proposal, the planning board is not, uh, the final arbiter.
We are, but you could, I would presume, delegate that authority on the site plan and special use permit to the planning board.
Even without that, under the present, uh, process, you are the ultimate authority on approving the zoning change.
Right.
You ask the planning board for their recommendation, should you approve it or should you not. If you approve it, then the applicant has to submit to the planning board a site plan and architectural agreement. And at that point, the planning board is the ultimate authority.
Unless we decide to do it differently. So, that's for us to decide. Does anybody have any more questions tonight?
Just one, just as more a statement, it's not a question. I mean, I'm certainly all for seeing businesses be able to grow, I think, grow, and I get that, in terms of your need to expand and keep your business alive. What I would like to have seen that I didn't see in those images, I would have liked to have seen a different perspective of what the building size looked like in relation to the gas station across the street. It would have given me a greater sense of perspective, because when I'm looking at that building, it looks huge. It's not that it's not beautiful, but it looks enormous to me. And I think it would have given me more of a perspective of the size to see it from the view of looking at it across from the gas station.
So, the current building we have that has a service facility is how many square feet?
It's a lot, it's a lot.
It's fifteen thousand. And the proposed building is nine. So, the proposed single building on that lot is going to be smaller than the current large building on the lot. So, currently, there's two buildings.
And it doesn't look that way in the image, you know? And I understand it's like...
It's actually larger than our proposed one.
Right.
But it's, but your proposed building is now higher.
Yeah, maybe that's what it is.
No, nothing to speak, it's not...
It looks like that.
So, so this, so, right, you know, this whole thing is out of health, so if you walk out the back of that building, the roof is almost on the ground.
Oh, right, of course, of course, of course.
You're on top of it, right? You're just that...
It's so hard to... Well, we could, as part of our review, we could ask for perspective drawings on top of what exists. We can do all the visual impacts.
The purpose of putting a small building on now is we're opening up space. Now, we can put, we can do with, apparently, we don't, we don't connect to the landscape, we have to stuff everything into this.
Be in those car models.
So, if you have one building, we'll be able to do landscape, it'll be similar, cleaner, and...
I just want to, I want to wrap this up tonight and move on to our last piece of business. Elaine, any more, I mean, this is something, I think, I suggest we chew on this. I suggest, you know, you can talk to Melody, you can talk to, you can talk to anyone you want, and we can decide. They're not asking us for anything tonight, I think this was a good proposal, and, uh, maybe you are asking us for something.
Just one thing, that we have the ability to, to make a formal application to the board for consideration of this board's next...
Did you want to make it tonight, or you're making...
No, no, we will, we'll, we'll submit, you know, appropriate materials, appropriate...
You have our, you have our, we have a policy that's, that we've given you, you follow the policy.
Correct.
And so, you know, this is just a preliminary meeting, yeah.
But we would like, you know, the, you know, consideration of this board for...
So, you're asking us whether or not we're open to receiving a proposal, which is how we, I, I, you want to, Joe, are you open to receiving a proposal?
Obviously, we are, that's what we were...
Yeah, I didn't ever say no.
Anybody can make it.
I think that we, I think, though, that we laid this out when we did it first to make sure that the applicants know that we are in favor of looking at this with the idea of working with them to come up with something, so that they're not wasting money and time. We're not knee jerk saying yes and having, you know, no intention of working with, it's, it's to save, you know, energy and money. And I, I think the feeling is, yes, we want to work with you and want to, to make, you know...
Thank you.
I consider someone's opinion, I agree.
Yes, I do.
Existing facilities are really important.
We value the company, we want you to stay here, we want to clean up the corner. What you've done, yeah, what you've done with the architecture's come a long way, so...
Was it fruit stand? Oh, wow, you guys started out as a fruit stand.
That was a little bit of a fruit stand.
Ruby's fruit.
And that was a bowl station, too.
All right. Ruby's fruit stand, it was just a fruit stand.
All right, well, thank you. If you have anything else for us, you could, with us, for your, thanks. And Mark, or who's getting me the color? Okay, thank you, Scott.
I can drop all the copies.
Yep, that'd be great.
You want to, you want to paint with large scale site plan?
No, we just, I think we just want, so we can have it...
We could send a PDF.
No, I would prefer working copies and PDF that we could send to...
Please call it what I'm saying here, and if I love it, you want a full file like that, or you want to have like a...
I guess we should have a full, then, you know?
I'll mark it.
You know, what we can have to work on and, you know, if you want to leave, that's what I suppose. with questions.
You know, if we have questions, the county is, we're going to have lots of questions. Who are we addressing, or should we talk to you?
She'll be on, I'll send the email out to
Elizabeth.
Whatever, you know, I guess. Or she'll be on copy, she can forward that.
Okay. I'm not sure, what is your name again?
Scott.
I think they're married.
Okay. You seem to be related.
Only by marriage, Joe.
And they're part of Hightower.
I figured.
How do you feel about the goats? You don't have to answer.
Don't have to answer. Yes, sorry, we're going to move on to our next piece of business. Thank you. Thanks for coming, we'll see you soon. We have one more piece of business. Thank you, we'll look forward to your presentation. I'm sorry, Barry, somehow you got to the last highway department credit card.
It's okay, we can take one.
Sure. Barry, you're the best. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
I think this gentleman's going to want
I, I'm getting there, Joe, I'm looking right at him, thank you.
If it's related, maybe
Oh, I can take it, I think I got it.
I mean, going back to the, one of the four corners of that intersection, there's the best part of that intersection. There's very, a lot of traffic going into the gas station that caused the problem with the new setup on that intersection. And the area directly across that area, one is wetlands, which is, they've been trying to sell that for the past ten years, and that buts out to the trailer park that's right beside it. And the area that is owned by the WD people is being used by a parking lot for both Janko and the Crane people, and it's, it looks ugly compared to what they
Well, that's, this is, that's not within our purview, so we're here to talk about what we can do. We can't, we can't control what isn't going on in the other corners right now. But I agree, this is a nice, a nice proposal. Is there, did you have comment, any comment on non-business, any public comment on non-agenda items, anyone? Does anybody else have anything else to address the board about? Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
All right. Good night, everybody, thank you.